Good evening, everyone. This is Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, June, January 20th, 2021 via go-to meeting teleconference. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dennis, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move on to item number two. Are there visitors on the call that would like to be recognized at this time?
Yes, there is.
Okay, name?
Paul Gabauer, 43 Long Avenue.
Thank you. And anybody else?
Mary Jo Phelps, 23 Delwood Avenue.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Tanya Abatello, 115 Old Post Road.
Anybody?
Hugh Birdsall, 15 South Parkway.
Anybody else? Good? Anybody else? We're good. All right, we'll move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes from the January 6th, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Allen Faver?
Hi.
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 opposed? abstained? Thank you. Uh, move on to item number four, appointments, reappointments. At this meeting, we do not have any currently up for appointment or appointments. Uh, we will now move on to item number five, which is the Sustainability Committee Report. Uh, we did receive a copy of the report. Um, is there somebody that's going to speak on behalf of the committee?
Um, I will. Uh, Justin Teague, uh, this is Tanya Abatello. Justin Teague was going to, um, and I don't know where he is. He's probably just running a little late. Um.
Can you just walk us through what you guys have been working on? I know there's some points system that we have to get to. So if you want to just kind of go through some stuff there and see what else you may need from the council at this time, that would be great.
Hello, can you not hear me?
Oh, Justin?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, yeah, I've been on the call. Uh, my, my, uh, headset dropped or something. Apologies.
At one.
Uh, yes, so I submitted a summary document. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, kind of what we've been doing in our approach. Uh, so, you know, we've taken over, uh, this project from a previous committee, uh, which had already done a fairly considerable amount of work organizing, uh, documents and, uh, and submitting them for the, uh, the certification process. At this time, we're, uh, in terms of, uh, the, the points required to reach the minimum requirement certification were about like 80% there. Uh, we're like depending on if we're talking about fully completed or in process items were 140, uh, points thereabouts, and the minimum threshold is 160, uh, for certification by the organization. Uh, in light of that and can, in consideration of the deadline being, uh, in August, uh, our goal currently is to, uh, either can, uh, complete or submit items that will meet the silver rather than the bronze requirements, uh, for sustainability CT. Um, and so on that short summary document that I submitted, the block items have been completed in their entirety. The rest of them are either, uh, proposal in process and that mostly what that means is that, uh, we in the committee are working on, uh, organizing, acquiring the documentation, but we believe that most of these actions have already been completed by, uh, members of the municipal government and that really the documentation just needs to be formatted and submitted, uh, which is, um, you know, I think to, to the credit of the town, certainly. Uh, I think also, uh, Tanya, you had said, uh, you'd done some, uh, research into the second, uh, sort of prong of our, uh, general charge, which was to look into, uh, alternative solutions for the, uh, uh, recycling, uh, any recycling initiatives for the town to replace the, uh, soon to be defunct, I guess, single stream, uh, recycling. I don't know if you wanted to talk about that or just sort of where we are with that because that's something we're also investigating, uh, possible alternatives for the town.
Yeah, I just attended, uh, a webinar today about packaging and commercial composting by Recycle CT. So I got a number of, uh, contacts and we're just basically in the discovery, you know, trying to figure out what we're doing with it right now, doing some research and probably, you know, I don't know. I guess we're going to put together, eh, probably like a cost benefit analysis type of situation with regard to how much we're spending currently, um, to ship it off and, you know, what other options there are, whether it be something regional within the cog or, um, you know, either with, or with a couple of area towns to put something together. So, um, again, just very preliminary right now, but it looks really, it's pretty exciting stuff.
Yeah, great. So, so yeah, but, uh, you know, to summarize, we're almost, we've almost completely submitted or like cataloged the documentation that's already been completed. And that was a big part of, uh, our early meetings was kind of, you know, being in maintenance mode and, uh, determining what had already been done, uh, and sort of piecing together and organizing that information. And once we've finished that, then we'll have a better idea about, um, what things we can do going forward and what we can propose to the town as a potential future action. Um, of course, some of the, uh, some of the, uh, things that we're considering, you know, outreach and stuff like that has been, uh, somewhat limited by the, the current, uh, public health situation. Uh, but we have been looking into, uh, ways, you know, with accessibility considerations, like with a town website where we can have some manner of, uh, outreach or communication, uh, with the community, uh, to in particular, address the, uh, the equity, um, item on this, uh, on this inventory.
All right, thank you, Justin. Does anybody on the council have any questions?
No, I, I do. I did. Justin, thank you guys for, for doing this. On this call, you have a couple of folks who could be of continued support. I know Paul is on the call and of course Christine and Carl's important and there's quite a few people. The timeline, I guess, is August, is that correct?
Uh, that is the deadline for the completed submission. So any for this, uh, calendar year. So our goal is to, uh, you know, have submitted documentation and completed items on the inventory to reach the silver threshold by that time. And we're, like I said, we're already very close to clearing the bronze bar. So that's like our, basically that's our fail cases that will already be there, but we're trying to reach for a higher standard.
Okay. Is there any support, additional support you need from the council?
Um, not at this time. Uh, we'll, you know, keep you apprised and reach out to the appropriate parties as we, uh, kind of, like I said, move into a slightly more active phase, start proceeding with, uh, you know, completing additional items or getting documentation on additional items. We've been reaching out to various departments in the town to, you know, determine what's been done, uh, in terms of like, you know, managing, uh, our natural resources, you know, stewarding our, our wetlands, uh, uh, efficient public lighting, stuff like that. We've been reaching out to various, uh, departments on that stuff, so, and we'll continue to do that.
Good, keep up the good work.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Again, yes, thank you again to, uh, Justin, the whole committee and all the work you've been doing. And we look forward to hearing from you in the near future. Thank you very much for all your work.
Yep, my pleasure.
All right, we'll move on to, um, next agenda, which is the Energy Committee. So, uh, Paul Gabauer, who's on the call, had sent an email out, um, interested in maybe, uh, reforming and putting back together a Clinton Energy Committee, um, maybe something that would be working in tandem with the sustainability. Um, asked Paul to join us tonight. I submitted and sent out to everybody this morning, the mission statement that Paul had put together. Um, and at this point, maybe just infancy stages as far as kind of what, what Paul's looking for out of this. And then maybe as a council, we can discuss going further, uh, forming the committee directives and such going forward. So, um, Paul, if you want to give us, uh, a little brief, uh, feedback on this, this would be great.
Sure. Um, I think most of you remember, uh, back in 2014, I started the, the Energy Committee. Um, I asked Willie if we could start an Energy Committee. Almost all the towns in the area have the Energy Committee. And, uh, we, we did a lot of good work and, uh, up until about 2017, when it kind of, we kind of lost steam, but it was a small committee. It was only a couple of us. And, um, at that time, Eversource laid off all their community outreach people. So we really relied on them for a lot of our outreach stuff and, and for a lot of our projects. So, um, but I, I think there's a lot of good work that's, that's, that's still sitting there on the table. And, um, I'd like to get it going again. And I don't know if anybody has any questions. I, uh, you know, happy to answer any, any questions you have about what our initiatives are or what our mission is. Um, I think most of you on the council know me, some of the, uh, on the council know me very well. I, I know all of you, some of you I know very well. I'm just a, I'm just a regular guy in town that wants to do some work. And, uh, I believe very, very much in, uh, climate change. And I think a lot of, you can have an impact in your, in your, in your town and, and have a, have an impact, you know, in the, in the broader sense. Uh, as, as far as the, the overlap with, uh, the Sustainable Committee, the, the sustainable, I, I, you know, knowledge of, of both committees and, um, the Sustainable Committee has about 80 actions and, and maybe nine or 10 of them have to do with energy. So, so that being said, um, any, any, any of our good work that, that would constitute an action, I'd be happy to share that with, with Kathleen or anybody on the, on the Sustainable Committee. And for instance, if we, if we do a community outreach, if we do an outreach to, to promote energy efficiency, that would probably constitute as an action. If we were to, uh, benchmark and track the energy consumption for the, for the municipal buildings, I think there's about 25, 26, um, municipal buildings. So that would mean tracking the, the oil, the, the, the gas, the propane, the water. Um, that would be a, um, that would be an action. If we, if we transition to a, in a, in an electric, um, uh, fleet for the, for the town, that would be an action. So, um, it's, they're, they're two separate things, but they do overlap just a little bit. So, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, so.
Yeah, Paul, uh, this is, uh, Tim Guerra.
Hey, Tim.
Uh, in trying to revise this committee, uh, do you have any other members of the community right now that you would know would, that would be interested in being part of a committee, Energy Committee?
Yes, I do. It would, it would be myself and, um, the, the original, we're, we're going to try and put the band back together. It's going to be, uh, Aiden, Maran, um, right now, um, Eileen O'Donnell and Paul Neary have expressed interest in being on the committee. Um, Eric has suggested a couple of people, including, uh, the possibility of a, of a Morgan student, which I think is a great idea. Um, I, I think, I think a bigger committee and, and me learning how to delegate better, I think we could get a lot of good work done, so.
I would, uh, be happy to volunteer as a liaison between Sustainability and the Energy Committee if that would be useful.
Sure.
Great.
Anyone else on the council?
Hi, it's Christine Gopiel. Um, just, um, who was the, the additional person who piped in? I didn't.
Uh, that was me, Hugh Birdsall.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you again, Paul, for bringing this forward and getting us, uh, your mission and the initiatives. We will circle back with this, I guess, on the next meeting, uh, with the council. And then maybe at that point, put the formation together for the committee.
That's Christine Gopiel again. Uh, perhaps we can put the information out. So if other people are interested, uh, they can bring their names forward at the next meeting as well.
You can do that.
Would I be able to get on the, would I be able to get on the email, uh, notifications about the Energy Committee?
Sure. Who's this?
Right, Hugh, again.
Yep, just want to make sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, Paul.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Paul.
Talk to you soon. All right, we'll move on now to number seven, which is the Finance Director's Report. Uh, Sue, you're up.
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, for December revenues, total revenues were $5 million for the month of December, and that included 4.9 million of the tax revenues. The current tax levy revenues are 66% of budget compared to the prior year, which was 66.8% of budget. So we're almost even with the prior year, about $124,000 less than would have been accumulated at the same time. When you include the additional collections we've received this year for supplemental motor vehicle and the prior tax levy were only $66,000 less than the prior year. Other town service revenues made up the difference of $100,000 and the breakdown of which that is, is noted in the report. Other revenues besides town revenues that we received were COVID reimbursement for the FEMA of 38,000 and from the state, the 99,000, they were both received in, um, December, as well as the property tax relief for veterans and totally disabled persons grants, which totaled $25,000 in total. Those were also received. Um, at, at this time, the revenues are forecasted to be short of budget for the full year are not changed from what I previously reported, and that includes the town building and Wausau rentals and investment income. Revenue areas forecast to have a favorable variance over budget, um, or what was previously reported, which is the real estate conveyance taxes, police contractual mobility fees. So we're consistent with what's been previously reported. On the expense side, the December expenses were 4.8 million. 3.5 million of that were transferred to the Board of Ed. The remaining $1 million was the fixed contractual expenses that are normally recurring. Um, December did include three payrolls as opposed to two. That happens twice per year. That's the other reason it was a little bit higher. There was nothing else that was out of the routine. And when you look through the budgets, you'll see that, uh, budgets are pretty much at the current 50% rate. We're halfway through the year, 50%. As far as other things to mention, um, there's been no change in the contingency. We're still at the 250, um, which we know that a portion of that will be used to cover the contract settlements later at the end of the year. Uh, the fund balance report you have seen has been updated to reflect the final fiscal year 20 audited balances. The unassigned fund balance increased from 7.8 million, which had been reported through November, up to 11.1 million. This was due to the additional revenues that were received in excess of budget of 1.8 million and expenditures which were under budget by 1.2 million. And those are further detailed in my report as well. This calculates the fund balance percentage now to be 19.8% of fiscal year 21 budgeted expenditures. This will be further reviewed with the presentation of the audit, the special town meeting tomorrow. Um, as far as the department overview, you should have received, I believe, today's email, or maybe even yesterday's, um, a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report, which we refer to as the CAFR, um, the federal and state single audit report, the required communication from the auditors to the town council letter, and also the communication on the internal controls. Those are all reports finalized in the fiscal year 20. These will also be presented by Joe Santafanti, who is the partner on our engagement from PKF O'Connor Davies. He'll be the one doing the presentation tomorrow at 5 o'clock. So if you haven't received those, um, reports, I'm sure you can contact Mary. Um, as far as the remaining, the current workload in the department, um, includes for January, we're very busy with, uh, compliance reporting that typically happens this time of year, uh, payroll related, OSHA and other financial reporting requirements. And then we're also with work related to the fiscal year 22 budget. That concludes my December report. If you have any questions.
Uh, Dennis here. Go ahead, Tim.
Uh.
Who was it?
No. I'm sorry, Eric here. I'm sorry. So it's Eric, just quickly, are we expected to receive any more, uh, CRF funds from OPM State? Is there any talk of that?
I do not know of any at this point. I mean, as we go forward, we'll be doing additional reimbursements to FEMA on a quarterly basis. Uh, the Board of Ed may be receiving funds on their side. They, I'm not including the Board of Ed's side.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis here. Uh, good evening, Sue.
Hi, Dennis.
Thank you for that, uh, wonderful report. I just have one question. I noticed in the last four or five months listed under the, uh, fund balance, uh, against the fund balance, we had the, the $250,000 allocated for the, uh, fund balance, and we had $8,25,000 for, uh, applied towards the capital. And we had $248,750 for the Morgan School Bridge. And I noticed on this last report, I don't see it listed. Uh, was that paid off or where did that go, that 248,750?
Um, that's already been reflected in how it gets calculated when you close out the year. So that was already reflected in the additional expenditures and additional revenues. That gets closed out to the fund balance and then gets carried forward. So it doesn't get reported anymore. That was a last year item.
All right. So in other words, it's not going to be in any form or manner taken away from the capital, uh, from the unbalanced fund?
No, it's already been reflected in there. It's already been taken out of it.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else for Sue? All right. Thank you, Sue, for all your work.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move on now to item number eight, the Chairman's Report. Um, so just a couple of things. Obviously, everybody knows we've been trying to do the best we can with the COVID updates. Um, there was the recent update today that came out that, um, they're going to be holding some, uh, vaccine, uh, the VAMS system, the volunteers will be at the Town Hall Green Room on Thursday and Friday this week, uh, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. So that's been set up to help, uh, the seniors in town 75 plus that need some help, uh, getting registered and getting appointments set up. Uh, I want to thank Mike Neff for getting this in place and taking the time to, uh, to help out with this. Um, I think it's going to be very important, a lot of messages that we received from the town as it related to this because of the confusion that was out there and how to register or that they make an appointment. So hopefully this will help, uh, ease some of the pain, uh, for the seniors that are out there, uh, scheduling their appointments. Um, also, we'd like to thank Eddie Albarino and Lisa Albarino and the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department for their help last night, uh, lighting up the town hall, uh, in the remembrance of the, uh, victims of COVID-19. Um, and then I just want to talk a little bit, I don't want to get into kind of what's going on outside of our world here in Clinton. Um, but, you know, a year into our changing government and having a town manager run the office and having a town council in place, um, I honestly do feel that we've made strides in, in working together as a unit, uh, setting aside agendas and, and coming together, working together, uh, as a group, putting the town first, making sure that we're making decisions that are beneficial to the town. Um, it was very important that we do that. I think that, you know, setting everything else aside and just working together as a group, we've done a great job. And I do want to continue to applaud everybody for that going forward and making sure that we keep that, um, at the forefront. We have a town manager that's going to, you know, run our town on a day to day basis and is doing a great job. And, and as a council, you know, I think need to continue, uh, to work together as we have, regardless of parties, regardless of anything else, uh, that we continue to work together and putting forth, um, you know, policies, procedures, committees, working on things that will benefit our town, uh, as a whole. So I, I really do want to applaud everybody for all their help in, in doing that and showing that, you know, overall and in our town, we can work together, um, you know, peacefully, cohesively, and, and set aside the other agendas that might be out there that are, that are all around us nowadays. So, uh, thank you again for all that. I really do appreciate everybody, uh, on the council. Um, that is it for me. We will now move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Uh, you have my written report, uh, but just to follow up and highlight a couple of other items. Uh, today, we sold our bond anticipation notes, uh, which I referenced in prior reports, which is part of the process of the town does in order to get some early financing, help projects moving forward. Ultimately, the, the, the bands have to be converted over to bonds. Um, right now, the, the process is that the bands will be converted next year. Uh, we went out to a marketplace last year about this time for bond anticipation notes. Um, so comparing year to year, uh, we had a, an excellent sale today, uh, far better than we had last year. Uh, so we had a strong interest from five buyers before, uh, we went into the, the bidding process. A sixth buyer came forward, uh, expressing interest in the town's debt. Um, the rate or the, the, at least the net interest cost for the bonds, uh, came in at 32 basis points, which is roughly a third of a percent. Uh, this, this time last year, we were over half a percent. Uh, so the cost of the bands is less than it was last year. Uh, strong interest in, in Clinton paper, uh, which was, uh, good to see and, uh, an, an excellent response for the town. So, uh, this puts us in a strong position to have, uh, pretty low interest costs, uh, for funds and in order to move forward on some projects. And, uh, despite what's going on elsewhere in the world, um, strong interest in, in issuing and getting Connecticut paper in terms of bonds. So that's positive for us. It's also positive going into next year's budget. Uh, speaking of the budget, we're going to need to come up with a budget calendar for the process to review the budget. Um, and again, looking to present, uh, a recommended budget, uh, to you in the middle of, uh, second week of February and then followed by the workshop. So it'd be looking for availability for a special meeting that second week of February and then looking for your availability for workshop meetings, February and March, so that we can have a town council budget for the public by early March. And then roll forward into what I'm going to assume will be a normal budget year and not with the, the process that was put forward last year by executive order. So that would have public hearings in early April, annual budget meeting, and then team things up for a referendum. Um, the only other point to add is, uh, again, on the, on the COVID front, uh, the state is, is clearly articulating, despite high levels of expectation about getting vaccinated, uh, the state's ability to vaccinate is limited by the number of doses that are available at any one time. Uh, so get that theme of being patients to get the vaccine. Demand exceeds, uh, exceeds the supply. There's about 200,000 75 and older's to be, uh, vaccinated. And the state is currently reporting that they're getting 46,000, uh, vaccinations a week. Uh, so it's several weeks before that group is going to be vaccinated before they move on to, uh, the next, the next group. Uh, currently, over 50% of the vaccine inventory is the Pfizer, uh, vaccine, which requires, uh, excessive cooling, which was not required by Moderna. Uh, so that's kind of limited who can actually do the vaccines by what level of refrigeration they have available to keep the vaccine cold. And if there's any questions on anything in our report, I'll be happy to answer.
Uh, I got a question, but I don't know if it's, it's not really intended in this report, Kyle. I just in general is wondering, uh, I know it's a little soon, but, uh, have anybody done a study or, uh, have anybody done a study or the impact of the recent revale on what we can anticipate as far as revenues from the revale of the homes? Did it go up in general? Did it go down? I haven't heard much about how we made out after that revale. I know, I think we should be really concerned about it before we get into this budget, so that if we have to adjust the mill rate first or whatever, I don't want to do like two things at the same time. I'd like to accomplish one thing after the other. Your comments, please.
Yeah, so as I know, last year during the budget deliberations, this year's budget concerns me more because we would be implementing revale. The grand list is signed by the assessor at the end of January. She's still in the process of reviewing permits and compiling data. So some of that mass appraisal work was done already by Vision. The individual one-on-one hearings were already completed with Vision in order to correct the errors or data points that were wrong. So it's really in the assessor's hands now to continue to crunch the numbers to put together the grand list. Unfortunately, the number that the council will have to start the budget conversation with will be the grand list before any adjustments by the Board of Assessment Appeals. So what the board does is going to come in between, in terms of the budget schedule, from when the council would finish its first round of review and then the public hearing. So it's really a question of how much activity is going to be in front of the Board of Assessment Appeals, and how much of the grand list is going to be reduced. So you've got some upticks that we all kind of know. CVS Online, the conversion of the land for Indian River going into private hands, so that should grow the grand list. How much more? I don't have firm numbers to give you at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carl, I have a question about the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management. Where would I find that report, number one? And secondly, you had mentioned in your reports possible bills before the General Assembly. Do you know of any that specifically relate to solid waste?
Yeah, I can give you the report that was circulated at CCM if you're interested. It's a little bit of a menu in terms of choices to pick from. CCM is in the process of trying to do a survey to get municipal interest behind some of the broader themes that were in the report. At this point, I don't know of any bills that are specifically flagged. I haven't checked the register to see if there's actually any legislation that's backing it up. So I think it's at the concept phase at this point in time, but I'll send you the CCM report for your review.
Great. Thank you.
This is Tim. I have a question that this could either go to Chris or to Carl. I read the letter from Daniel Meany from the water company about the rate case. Have we officially assigned anybody from Clinton to be on that board?
I think Mark could put his name forth as somebody that would be interested in doing it.
I know I read that, but has it officially been granted, or?
We have not.
Okay.
So we will take care of that. So obviously, maybe at our next meeting, we'll have that on. We'll put that to bed.
All right, because I, you know, I was a little bit concerned when I read it that their rate increase is roughly going to be 20%. Now, I know it's been a while since they've had a rate increase, so I don't know if this is reasonable or not. But I bring it up only because whoever our member is that's going to be part of this program, that they understand, you know, what is a reasonable increase for not only the water company, but certainly the increase that's going to be represented to the townspeople who are on Connecticut Water. Now, I'm not, so I'm not affected, but I still think that we all have to have a concern for those that are on the Connecticut Water. And again, I bring up the question, is this going to be a reasonable increase for the water company and for our residents to have to pay? Thank you.
Christine Gopiel, to Tim's point, the town pays a significant amount towards the fire hydrants, and it is significant. So that rate increase would be impacting our municipal budget as well. So conversations probably should be had with Connecticut Water directly from the municipal level on the impact, seeing it as a resource to all residents within town. Just to go back on the assessors, I'm wondering, since we have a pretty good information, historical information from the Board of Assessment Appeals and the reductions that take place, they're generally under $1 million, somewhere between $300,000 and $700,000. If we can get that report sooner rather than later, you know, something in the form of an Excel spreadsheet looking at previous years, previous five years, and then this year increase for property values.
And remember, the financial forecast I presented a few meetings ago, the last two revales didn't seem to deliver significant growth in the grand list. It was less than half a percent in both of those situations. Anyone else? All right. Thank you again, Carl. We'll now move on to item number 10, the Town Council Committee liaison reports. Who wants to start?
Mr. Chairman, I have a report from a meeting that was, this is Tim, by the way, that was held on January 12th. Just some notes from that. Of course, the EDC is very involved in this Clinton manufacturing coalition in working with six major companies in Clinton. That continues on as we speak. As a matter of fact, I think, I don't know if you, if all of you know who Bob Werner is, but he is the liaison person from EDC that is working with the companies here in Clinton. He has actually recently reached out as part of the Governor's Workforce Council. So he's taken this information all the way up to Hartford in hopes that there's going to be help when needed from that location. Also, for your information, there's going to be a high school video production team, which will consist of one teacher and two students that are going to go to Bosch. And they are going to be responsible for developing a video that Bosch can use to help promote for new business and/or actually new employees to come to their organization. So I thought that was interesting. Just a couple of other notes. I didn't know anything about this until Tuesday, but evidently it has been suggested to them that the town, we hire a part-time economic development professional to perform, you know, different various functions in and around town for the EDC. And that evidently is going to be presented as part of their budget for this year. The cost would roughly be about $10,000, $11,000 for this person. And from what I gather, this person would help EDC in their functions for the town. And that's all I have. Oh, one other thing. They're going to update their website, and their website will be part of the newly revised Clinton website. So if you're looking for any EDC information, you'll be able to find it on the Clinton website. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tim. Next.
Yep, Eric here, planning and zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission bed on January 11th. Connecticut Water Company Regulatory and Environmental Compliance Coordinator Jess DeMar spoke to the commission regarding aquifer protection areas specifically pertaining to stormwater, fueling areas, hazardous chemical storage and containment. John Gaskowski, as you know, is our town planner consultant, continues to work on the major redevelopment projects at the former Morgan School, including meetings and coordination about demolition and site cleanup. The first building, we are told, the Big Y Building, is due to begin construction within the next two months. Continue discussions with RiverCog on potential regional affordable housing plans and potential grants. The commission will be receiving a letter from RiverCog with an interactive map on it, which indicates proposed changes in the future land use as part of a new regional P O C D. And we had two approved amendments to the zoning regulations, coastal site plan review, sections 18.3.1 and accessory apartments, section 12.6. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else?
Dennis here. Police Department. I attended the police by virtual Zoom last week. As I've reported all through the year, they are running very, very well on their budgets. They are right on the nose. There's nothing in the horizon that looks like it's going to disturb the budgets. Again, we're in the ever-ending process of now going out to find another police officer inasmuch as Officer Malonkitis has recently resigned. And so we're in the process, and hopefully we can be as lucky as we have before with picking up a couple of already police officers from other areas. But if not, then we'll have to start from scratch, and that could be a financial drain of some sort. Good news, I guess FEMA or the state has, I should say, the state of Connecticut, has reimbursed for COVID expenses to the police department for $75,000 for the costs that they had during the recent pandemic, as well as $13,404 for our communications department. Other donations or whatever, some good, I guess, horse trick was the fact that inasmuch as the Ford Motor Company was a little late delivering our vehicles, somehow we've got them to give us $2,500 worth of parts for our new vehicles, which is whoever was responsible for it did a great job. And finally, as I reported before, the testing of the cameras is almost done. And I believe that they're going to put something in the capital budget in the amount of $275,000, which will cover 30 cameras for the bodies and 12 dash cameras for the automobiles. It will also include a five-year storage. And maybe, maybe not, but regardless, we're going to go ahead, I guess, and have to purchase these. But there's a possible 30% reimbursement later from the state. They're wobbling, back and forth. They're wobbling a little bit. But so anyways, that's the news from the police department.
Dennis, I have a quick question. Did they say where the $75,000 in expenses, the COVID-related expenses, where that, what that was for or about?
No, no, Carol. I don't believe, and my notes are in the minutes. I'll look at the minutes again. But I don't believe.
I mean, I saw, I saw it in Sue's report also. I just wondered, what would the police department, where would their overs, or their spending of $75,000 come from and be attributable to COVID?
It's in the last pot of funds that came in from OPM, and it was allocated by formula to each municipality, and you could charge it off some of your personnel expense for first responders who were dealing with COVID issues. So some of it was credited back to fire, some of it was credited back to other departments if they were dealing with frontline issues or COVID-related type activities.
Okay, so it really wasn't, you know, a specific line in their budget that was affected by COVID? This is almost like a grant? Is that kind of what you're saying?
That's the way the state handled the last payment out of the CRF fund.
Okay.
Just some of the CARES Act funding. They had to distribute a certain percent to municipalities, so they reimbursed direct expenses first, and then the second wave of it was distributed by way of formula for a population.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All good?
Christine Gopiel. The tourism district has not determined the next calendar for next year. So as soon as we have that information, I can share what's going on with them.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We can now move on to number 11. Executive session, personnel, so to Connecticut, John Statute 1-206A. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second, second. Oh, no, I'm sorry, invite Carl and Mary.
And invite Carl and Mary. Go into executive session and invite Carl and Mary.
All favor.
Hi.
Post, please. Thank you. So when we're back from executive session, I will look for a motion to amend our agenda to add item number 12, to add annual adjustment to town manager salary.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm staying. All right. So we are now on to item number 12, which would be a motion, I'm sorry, yes, a motion to adjust the town manager's salary by 2% increase.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I think just for transparency's sake, it would have been nice to have it on a formal agenda as opposed to add to this agenda, so the public would have been aware of it. That's just for the record.
Anyone else? All favor?
Would you like to also add?
I couldn't hear.
Would you like to also add that it's in line with the other contracts within the town, contract increases?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the motion then would be friendly amendment to make a motion to adjust the town manager's annual salary by 2% in line with other town employees. Does that go?
Sounds good.
Okay. We got a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other further discussion? All favor?
Hi.
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 Post? Same. Thank you very much. Thanks all very much. I thank you all very much. I appreciate the feedback you gave me and look forward to your continued support. Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
See you tomorrow.
On to item 15, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All favor, discussion. Post, abstain. Thank you all again very much.
This conference is no longer being recorded.